Well, it is five thirty and it's great to welcome you all to the March fourteenth, twenty twenty, public viewing of our board meeting. It's so good to see each and every one of you. What, that's a packed house. And that's pretty exciting. And I see a lot of faces that, uh, I see Kendall. And it's good to see you. And with that, I want to call us to order. And so, uh, my name is Superintendent. I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just, you know, decided to have everybody here with us and all these beautiful song bases and that beautiful color of blue. And, um, and you know, a lot of those faces when they were six years old. So, I'm getting old. Also, I want to welcome everyone that's with us online this afternoon. The first item on the agenda, I think, is to invite, um, Mr. Curry forward for the invocation, please. Mr. Curry, if you can, everyone would please stand. And if you're not standing, let that go.
That's great. Dear him and Father Lord, we come to you with praise and thanks, Lord, for all the grace, mercy, blessings that you have bestowed in the continued support of our schools, our community, our state, and our nation. And Lord, we hum and ask that you continue to bless our schools, our students, our staff, and their families. And Lord, we just ask that your hands be on this board meeting and that Lord you lead in God and direct us. And Lord, that the decisions made here tonight, glorify and honor you and your kingdom. Lord, we are so blessed to be on the floor to these students and educate them. May we never forget the mission that you have given to us. In Jesus' name, amen. Pray. Amen.
Thank you. Lord, may you see, I want to invite Officer Kay forward to introduce your face of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in our heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May he succeed. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is to approve tonight's agenda and approve minutes. And I will get this policy open up. Uh, there's two sets of minutes. Or seven. This policy, you'll just scroll through those little panels. The first set of minutes is from the, um, last regular scheduled board meeting. The fourth person on this line, I thought that was reading that, um, the jury of the nation should be contracts for many school year. And the one that was in the call meeting, we got a call meeting, February twenty seventh, for personnel. And then, Mr. Chair, I recommend the nation to approve this present.
Board, we have a recommendation to approve consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by Ray Fan? Unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is special recognitions. And we have a lot of special with all the members here at the time. We were glad, um, we were going to recognize this Lord Todd, who was the state winner of softball security, um, federal contest, probably our chief of technology here tonight, or, um, reasons that technology killed. So, this is my, this is the chief, why to, uh, recognize her, national, sir.
Yes, the other one.
All right, thank you, sir. We will do that. Um, next, I'm going to get to the part I'm raising forward. Now, I'm a little bit jealous because I think we can talk about all these wonderful accomplishments that I'm raising.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And, Lord, I bet you everyone's doing well. This is always an awesome thing to do when you recognize our students, uh, through our leadership. Something that I think, uh, could be very valuable for these people, for them to do for their, uh, um, I think, in years before right here. Oh, right, awesome thing. Uh, first, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Jensen, Mr. Jensen, uh, to recognize the year. There he is. One more, please.
Uh, I've got an ankle here, uh, of course, we also have, like, some of these teams, uh, as I mentioned, I have soccer, uh, play, finished as a state winner of, they only, only the top twelve of the state, get into the ten state tournament. And then down there, you know, we need, uh, you know, his first match, and they were able to do that, finished top eight. So, he finished as a leading eight wrestler, uh, along with, uh, you know, his wrestling partner, you know, Blake. So, we're excited. I think that also is how he's coming back for those who said that's well, and if you're a history champion, you can talk about him. So, we're excited about that.
Now, that's some of the good things we will notice. We're going to have several on here tonight. It's a cause of the stuff. Uh, here, we're participating. We've got a baseball game tonight. We've got a golf match. We've got a soccer match going on. So, lots of that going on. These kids do a lot of different things. So, that's a side thing. So, I think we'll have to sit back down and bring it next month and bring it together.
We've got a big all night, we've got a day.
All wrestlers. I've got anyone that's right here.
Thank you, Tony. You said, uh, we got kids doing other sports out there, doing it in, um, high school, middle school, high school, and the times that children have an opportunity to decide what they want to do the rest of their life. So, we try to, um, in many ways, it's possible. And we try to, um, to encourage that. So, parents who are listening, please, uh, encourage your children to try everything that they want to try in your rest of their life. But that's more than the, you have a stop.
Congratulations.
And I think I have a way to do anything. I'm going to go over, please. Uh, I think this is going to be a little bit of a wrong. We had thirteen white listeners, uh, go to the state competition. And all thirteen of them placed in the top six. Uh, we have, we have sixteen tonight. So, what do you choose according to the pound, pounds on the strongest, you kind of mean in the state? Uh, so, so they had tons of success. Uh, we have with us, uh, tonight, we have Cooper Born, who is state champion. Or you can, uh,
Yeah.
Carson Scott, uh, was also state champion, too. He's a baseball man. I stand with you, uh, state champion. And Kate Holloway, state champion, but he didn't play golf. Now, listen, you don't find a lot of white that's a state champion playing golf. They did a little one, you know, and they didn't do that. And then, uh, Roderick, uh, came in five pounds, state champion, uh, already tied. And also, and then came in third, like, I always do it for white classes. So, uh, third place is Jada Green. Bryce Mole, finished fourth. Turner Martin, also finished fourth in fifty weight class, means he played soccer tonight. Uh, Baron Attacord. He finished in fifth place. And again, in twenty weight class, uh, CJ Reese is playing baseball tonight. Also finished in fifth place. And then, Ray Lewis. And then, High Swat, Walton, he finished in sixth place. There's a lot of work that we're doing. And, uh, as our athletes do a lot of the things that our coaches do as well. So, the coaches are actually, the coaching goes towards tonight, some of the things we mentioned. So, I can talk about these guys. There's a tremendous amount of work within this everyday, uh, community situation. And they go and compete. Whether it is in the KHS, they support, but like, they teach KCA. And they go and compete. And they compete against other schools across the state. And just a tremendous amount. It's thirteen, thirteen finishes in the top six. I mean, that's, that's incredibly impressive. And the fifty people work are competitive. Most importantly, fifty people work are athletic. So, you know, like I said, now, we're looking at some of the strongest guys in the state right here. So, very proud of them and the work they put in. So, let's give it a minute. Don't say that.
Do you feel, Lord, Dr. Randy, do you feel that the majority of them are also attracted to?
The majority of y'all's are attracted. But attracted, they're just whatever schedule, so that they can be here tonight. So, so we appreciate the, the sports working together as, as best as they can. Actually, all the games being played tonight are rescheduled games of golf, because of the weather. And so, so our, our coaches and sports do a great job of trying to work together to accommodate each other.
All right, one, two, three. She's got a thing on.
Quick, it's a man. Nice one.
All right, Popery, just keep.
Keep going.
Yeah, keep showing more talent, we got.
And last, but certainly not least, let's bring forth our dance team. They even coordinated their outfit. It's kind of impressive.
Yep.
Coach Rogers is the head coach. Coach Williams is assistant coach. I'll let her speak in just a minute about the team. These young ladies have been doing this for two, I mean, they've been dancing longer. We have had a dance team at Fannin County High School for two years. Both years, they finished at least in the top three in the state. So, that's very, very impressive. And when you look at the work that they put in, and I'm always so impressed with our student athletes and the work they put in, because the academic expectations are exactly the same. Right? I mean, they have to do the exact same thing academically that everybody does. But they still give their time to represent their school, their community, their family. And they do it in such a way that brings us so much pride. So, I'm very proud of these young ladies, not only for being the, the founding members of the Fannin County High School Dance Team, but also for the work they put in and the success that they've had. I also want to point out, on their shirts there, you see the term rebelettes. Every other girls' team at Fannin County High School is made of rebels. But they all got together and came to my office and they had this big, long speech they were prepared to give me as to why they should be called the rebelettes. And about thirty seconds in, I said, okay, I'm fine with that. This, we've got this big, long speech prepared to tell you. So, I kind of took away from their glory by agreeing to it. So, I always thought, I've learned next time, I'm going to let them go through the whole process for trying to talk to you or something. So, just very proud of these young ladies. And Coach Man, I'll let you speak.
So, I'm just going to recognize some of our amazing girls here. So, we have our senior captain, Catherine Tamorino. Our junior captain, Ally Jones, who also competed with us. Uh, juniors, Callie Lewis. Emily Dixon. Kate Gaddis. Abby Sanji. And then we have sophomores, Rodden Mole. Abby Lester, who also finished in eighth, Parker Stanley, and they got first place in our year to the national. Eva McNally. Ronald Webb. And our manager group wants everything together, lovely nation. So, at state, we finished, um, in third place with our Parker team, which we're super excited about. We're truly hoping that this year. And we also got, uh, sixth place for our Jasper team. We're super excited. We want to make it happen for our next season.
And I'll just say, you know, one problem time about all of our athletes that you've seen here tonight, these are things they've accomplished at the state level. Okay? This is not regions. This is at the state level. I mean, it's all other schools in the state. So, very proud of all of our athletes and all the work that they put in. So, congratulations to all of our athletes tonight we recognized. Mine is up, man. Mine is up, man.
Good. All right. Smile. Shouldn't say rebellet.
Rebellet.
All right, let the news break. Popery, thank you. I want to thank all the coaches, all the sports staff, teachers, and parents. Thank you, because you all do a lot, um, to step in to get your kids where they need to be and help them coordinate. So, you are appreciated. Next up, for special recognition, I want to invite Dr. Hodges forward. She has got some more pride in the day on our kids. Dr. Hodges?
Good evening, my name is Superintendent. Lord, we're excited to get to celebrate some athletes tonight. I'm going to invite our eighth grade girls' basketball team and their coaches, um, Coach Sasha Anderson to come forward. While we don't have the opportunity to go beyond the regional level, these girls competed at the highest stage, on the highest stage that they had the opportunity to. And if you have a chance to watch them play, you will have seen some of the hardest working, scrappiest, toughest girls you've ever seen. What I thought, what my crush used to tell me, um, when I was growing up, is when I saw these girls, when you are over the line this way, or a lady when you cross the line, you're a player. These girls are players. Every one hundred percent of the, of, of the way, they're players. Um, they only lost two games this season. Um, they won the ones that matter. They were the, um, mountain, mountain league middle school champions. So, we're super proud of them. I'm going to invite Coach Anderson up to introduce the girls' team. Um, for eighth grade, we also, um, allow seventh graders to play up as well. So, we have some seventh graders to set up to help us. This year, our eighth graders are Ally Potts. Jacoba Hampton. Daniel Gavis. Brooklyn OMB. And not with us is Sage Turner, Sage Patton, and Ava Walton. For seventh grade, we have Addison Rapper. Lennox Patterson. Carrie Frieden. Riley Abbott. Vera Grace Cross. London Stinn. Aubrey Franklin. And Hallie Hampton. And just one more note, that eighth grade group, they're actually back to back, the champions. They won seventh grade here in hand. And we've got a fellow banner that's already made up in the gym. We're super proud of them. And so, I will, I'll give them one more round of applause.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next person up is, um, I'd like to invite Mr. Curry forward. He's going to recognize, um, Tom Cook, who is our school bus technician, and a recent competition that he had. Mr. Curry, and I believe that Mr. Cook cannot make your time. Is that correct?
That is correct. He's not going to be here. And we still want to recognize him, uh, board and, uh, that is superintendent. Uh, Tom Cook is one of our technicians at the bus shop. And, uh, each, uh, recent district has a competition each year where technicians can go and compete against one another. They take a written test, uh, and some other things they do. And I think, by any reason, this, this year, we had five or six counties there with ten, uh, participants. And Tom come in second. Tom is a master technician. So, we're glad to have him. He's able to fix a lot of things on a lot of buses that other people would actually, uh, call the service center to do. So, uh, it's great, uh, to have him over shop. And we just want to recognize his accomplishment.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Anderson, do we have any public comment?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we have one. Uh, Mr. Louis Lewis. He needs to speak on no trespassing signs.
All right. And were you able to review, um, the superintendent's process for?
I did, Mr. Lewis, for, uh,
Okay, perfect. Okay, all right. So, um,
Thank you, sir. Uh, that job is fine. I actually just couldn't see. Let's see all of you. I'm asking, originally, I'm up here at the five steps, not as a board member, just to make the thought and statement. I'm asking that the Board of Education put a discussion, that's board meeting, of no trespassing signs, and that this discussion be open to the public, the audience also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Chair, is FY twenty four GSA exemplary board recognition criteria. I'd like to invite, uh, Lieutenant Curry forward.
Good evening, board. Uh, so what we have here, uh, this is, as, as you gentlemen know, uh, there's what we have here, uh, criteria that our board members have to go through every year to remain an example reward. So, uh, this, uh, what's listed here, uh, this is just a fraction of what they do, uh, to take care of our students and do everything that they do for our school system. But this fraction, again, is what allows them to remain an example reward. So, a couple of things have changed, uh, very, very minor changes, I do want to point out. Uh, one change has to do with the self-assessment that takes place every year. Uh, for this year's self-assessment, it was a requirement that the superintendent also take the self-assessment. So, uh, in past, that's, that's been optional. But now, superintendent has to also take the self-assessment along with, uh, our board members. Uh, the other is when we do our internal review committee that we just, uh, that we just had recently. In the past, it's not been, uh, something that's mandatory for a central office administrator to take that internal review. This year, now, it is mandatory. So, not only did we have to have the board chair, uh, device chair, two community members, we also had to have a central office administrator also take that, uh, this year, uh, as well. So, those are the two, uh, only changes that, that took place between this year and last year. Uh, but again, uh, thank you, I just want to say thank you, gentlemen, for, for what you do, uh, to, to remain an example reward. And, and, and again, do everything that you do to take care of our school system.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to review the board code of ethics and conflict interest policies. I agree.
And here are, uh, those two policies. And so, um, board members, again, I know that you had the opportunity to look at these, uh, policies in great detail, uh, before the meeting, both in electronic form. And also, uh, we gave you, uh, hard copies, uh, as well, uh, to review. Uh, so those are the two policies that we have listed here in the board meeting. Uh, again, that's the, the code of ethics, and then also the conflict of interest. And again, uh, you gentlemen have the opportunity to, to look at those ahead of time. And I appreciate that. Uh, also, uh, as you came in, I believe, uh, Stephanie was able to track down signatures of the affirmation of, uh, you receiving those policies, all of it. Mr. Bramble, uh, and we're going to, we're going to track you down, uh, a little bit, Mr. Bramble, to be able to do that. So, again, uh, appreciate you, uh, you know, taking time to review these policies and also taking time to, to sign the, the affirmation.
Doctor, that's actually an annual expectation.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And the confirmation is, uh, just confirming that we do have these policies in place and that they can be used. Correct.
Absolutely. This is, uh, something that we must do annually. Uh, exactly. Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is an annual board internal review summary.
Absolutely. And so, this, um, you know, I'm not going to stand here and just read the entire summary. Uh, but this is a summary of, uh, the internal review that did take place on Tuesday, March fifth. And, you know, just some highlights there, uh, that took place. Uh, we were able to come in, uh, Miss, I'll just scroll back up. So, just, I'm sorry. Just so, just to see the people that were on the, uh, this committee. And so, we also have, we always have two community members, uh, the chair, the vice chair, and then, uh, central office admin and superintendent that, that, that serve on that committee. And again, it's, it's great for community members to come in and be able to, to understand a lot of the items. One of the things that board members do that they may not have known about. And so, it's the always very eye-opening experience. And, and it was really good conversation. And I know I thoroughly enjoyed it. Um, and so, you know, just, uh, some of the, some of the highlights there, uh, looking at this, uh, we did come to a conclusion that our Board of Education members do an outstanding job, uh, and adopted and following the board policy, while also abiding by the code of ethics for board members. The committee also agreed that our board members go beyond when it comes to keeping the focus on students of Fannin County school system. Um, all members, also included, that the Fannin County Board of Education functioned together in a well-organized and professional manner. And it was noted that the board members worked alongside the superintendent toward the common goal of ensuring our students have a multitude of opportunities and avenues in which to succeed. And this helped us to reaffirm that the Fannin County school system holds a vision of excellence for all students with successful progression. for all students with successful progression at each level and hundred percent graduation rate. So again, Chair, Vice Chair, thank you for taking that time. And this is also an annual requirement, something that we must do annually, to make sure that we have that review.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is, Dr. Ruth, if you would stay there, and Mr. Maynor, if you would come forward just a minute. Board, if you would allow me, the next item on the agenda is to recognize our school board and honor its School Board Appreciation Week, which is actually this week, March eleventh, day fifteen. And if you all would come around, I know that we have some principals that must be on the board and have, they've got a lot to say. Dr. Ruth will present you all with your example report award that you all earned for this past year, and start in the new cycle. Dr. Ruth will also present you with a certificate of appreciation. And then GSBA gives pins and honor for board members that served fifteen years or longer, twenty-five years or longer, or thirty years or longer. And so, Mr. Bearden and Mr. Braylon, you all receive a pin for fifteen years plus service. And Mr. Luis, you'll receive a pin of thirty years plus service. So, and with that, I would like to invite the principals forward. They had something up their slates, as usual. Dr. Ruth, would you like to say what? And he has his readers on, wasn't he?
Just a quick one, I'll say that there is no better calling than servant leadership, and we want to give these to you as a token of appreciation for the service that you provide to our children and our school system. And to let you know that he's greatly appreciated and how you work for the better of our county schools. Tell him what he is, what kind of... He's a bull over. Jacket, bull over, potato, tots.
Thank you, principals. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, school governance team. Dave, Dr. Ruth.
Problems, this is my last agenda for anyone. That's why I have it, I just raised that. So here we had school governance team, Blue Ridge Elementary event. We did have a fundraiser request and some notable work going over the CLIP progress monitoring. And so CLIP, that is essentially our district improvement plan. It stands for Consolidated LDA Improvement Plan. That's what you're looking at there. Their review, their own school improvement plan, and also title budgets, master schedule for next year, robotics competition that we had, and PTO, and then map data, which is data that all students take on. East fan actually had two meetings, and so when it comes to the deadline between last meeting, last board meeting and this board meeting. So fundraiser requests there, also field trip requests, and then notable work, review their school improvement plan, analyze their map data, and talk about changes to PTO. Then the next meeting there, we East fan had, again, some fundraiser requests there, field trip requests, and then some notable work, talked about Title II carryover budget, and then also discussed the upcoming SGT elections. West fan had field trip requests, and then also looked at map data, looked at CLIP progress monitoring, and SIP progress monitoring, SIP standing for School Improvement Plan, and then had a financial report and stamp staying update. Middle school, notable work between our two board meetings. High school, as usual, lots of fundraiser requests, lots of field trip requests, lots of facility use requests, all stated there. And then notable work, they give a CTAD update, talked about SIP and CLIP progress. I talked about a Title II amendment, which is one of the federal budgets we have to take care of. And then also had a discussion on audio enhancement, which is the new system that we're bringing to all of our schools to enhance audio in the classroom and for school safety. Just a reminder, minutes are counted at the individual schools. Also, while I'm doing this, I want to get an update when it comes to the SIGLE Bank Committee and where we stand with that. We did have a survey go out to our team that's looking at forming that policy. And then we are going to meet again in April as a follow-up after we put that survey out to look at ironing out what a policy could look like for us with that SIGLE, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, school cabinets, and I'd like to invite Mr. Mathis forward to share an update.
Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to come and talk about the school. And not all those people were here for me, I'm just watching my daughter walk out, so she didn't want to hear my first thing. Anyway, so a lot of good things have been happening at East fan. First people I want to recognize is our cafeteria staff. We had a state audit a few weeks ago, and they just knocked it out the park. They did a great job. There's a lot to that. I have no idea how much it entailed in a state audit, but it was a lot, and they did a great job. Last week was National School Breakfast Week, and so they had selfie stations, they did door prizes. Those ladies and gentlemen now, Ms. Bobby, they do a great job. I've watched them give money out of their personal money to buy kids snacks and stuff for our kids, and they just do a phenomenal job. Recently, we had the dental booth at East fan. That is something that Miss Rhimer and Miss Terraput together for our kids. We had about sixty kids, I think fifty-nine was the number of kids that they saw between about eight-thirty that morning and two o'clock that afternoon. They're coming back in a couple of weeks to do some more work, like fill cavities and things for our kids, but that's just awesome kids that may not have that opportunity to go to the dentist. It's pretty cool to have those pools up, and I mean, they run through there, and they do a good job with them.
And Mr. Prig, if I could, and Miss Collins, if you could go back to that slide just a minute. When I was going through these presentations, that smile, that is it all right there.
Yeah, we had very few cryers. So I don't like to get to the dentist, but like, I mean, seriously, they get them through there, and like, I'm still upset that smile says it all.
Can I comment on that thing?
Yes, sir.
Undoubtedly, the unity of them being together like that, for a certain gap of six.
That probably calms some nerves, like, you know, if you want to get a shot, you can get a shot.
They do itself.
Yes, it would. Yes, sir. Our EFS Teacher of the Year was Miss Cable Majors, does an awesome job with our speed team. You know, keeps us all in date with our deadlines, and she just does a phenomenal job with our kids. Takes on some of our toughest kids and does just a great job with them, very well deserved. This gentleman that convened with us tonight, with Mr. Mathis, was Nora Todd. She is a third grade student at East fan, and she won the state cybersecurity poster winner. Mr. Mathis and myself, and Nora and her mom and brother went to downtown Atlanta, and we looked just as lost as you could think. We could see the twin towers, and we could find the door. We tried to go through the Marde, we tried, we walked about three blocks, but we finally found the entrance to it, but we made it and made it on time. And so Nora got to meet the state superintendent, and just, it was a great day for us. It was definitely a learning experience for us. Special Olympics, this is our winter event, and the top left is Ms. Jessica Rivera, who's the actual coordinator, all that now. And so she is a teacher of mine at East fan, does a great job. If you've never been to a Special Olympics, and you want to kind of rekindle lighter in this business or in this profession, go there, it's all the smiles, and it's just a great event. And we look forward to the spring event, which is the track and field. Am I saying that right, track and field? It's coming up in the spring, and we might hope for good weather. So rewinding back to Thanksgiving, we made a crazy day out of Thanksgiving. Going back, our lunchroom ladies, we fed over eight hundred and some people that day. And so some people that have multiple kids at our school get there about ten-thirty. That's what time we start, is about ten-thirty, and they don't leave until about one o'clock, but it gives them time to kind of fellowship with the teachers and the faculty. And so we enjoy having them on our campus, as you can see. They bring aunts, grandpa, grandma, and they bring their whole family there. It's a good day for us. Veterans Day, of course, is a special day at all of our schools. Veterans really enjoy coming out to see the kids. Pre-K three-five, every one of our kids perform and do a great job. We had Mr. Morgan there on the bottom right, who was our guest speaker, and you'll see him in another slide. He does a lot for our school, great community member, has a lot of, just kind of a jack of all trades, but does a lot with our kids. Also, no better way to kick off Christmas than with our white Christmas. And so again, all of our kids perform, we pack out the PAC, it's usually standard room only, and this year was no different. And so it's just a great way, it's usually the last day or two before we get out for Christmas, right? It's just a good way to kick off the Christmas season. This is a picture of our second grade team, and so we've done a lot of professional learning. You lots in the staff development center here. And this was either one of the math days or the reading curriculum mapping. But they've, you know, they're doing a letters training, which is pretty much, is the science of reading that ties into our phonics instruction and writing, and also with our reading curriculum mapping that they're getting together doing. And so it's all of our teachers across the district who are getting together and having these trainings and keeping that consistency between all schools and what we're providing for our kids. Recently, back in the fall, I had three teachers go to the middle school, and they got certified in the adopt a stream. And so you guys got to see that on your boardwalk that day, where y'all came in and they were checking the macro converter rates and the streams, and tying that to some of the pollution and the healthiness, I guess you'd say, of our streams. And so they do a great job of that, and they love getting out in the water. I got a kid out of the parent pickup the other day, he had this big long stick in his backpack, and I swear to the world, is that? And it was one of those grabber things, he said, I can reach out in the stream and get some, pick some stuff out. I was like, that's pretty smart, so. Recently, we had robotics competition and had a great turnout. There's Mr. Morgan again on the top left, he is a judge, or was a judge in that competition. He also helps with our robotics, and so he comes every Monday and spends about hours, an hour and a half with our kids, and so he does a great job with them. But that was at Blue Ridge Elementary. Read Across America Week, we had people coming in and out all week. At one point in the office, I looked up, and we got somebody, two people coming in with a crown. And they were actually our homecoming king and queen, who came in and read to our kids. And we had parents come in, grandparents, just a great week to get our kids excited about reading. Of course, this year is our first year that we had our Valentine's Day since before COVID, and so had a big turnout. And our kids, that's really a big deal y'all for our kids. As you can see, they get dressed up, they had a picture station, of course, there's food, snacks, candy. Kids that come up, they'll show up with flowers, little boys in tuxedos and suits, and I mean, they make a big deal out of it. And we make a big deal out of it for them, and all that money goes back to our children's money. First, that's the perfect attendance. We had about fifty kids in our school this year who had perfect attendance the first half of the year, and so they took a trip over to the Agorn or the Ag facility, and so got to kind of, you know, hang out with some high school kids and learn about different animals and the different shows that they participate in. And so our kids loved one, it was a little cold that day, but still a good day for our kids. Last but not least, because our parking lot, we got twenty-three, twenty-three or twenty-four there, twenty-three parking spaces. And so that cleared out all of our vehicles in the grass, on the hill, in the ditch, wherever else they could find a park. And I've got a lot of good feedback from parents that have come up to the school, and we have now had district parking for them, so that was, that was great. It's a little bit of a walk, but if you look at that white truck right there, you can see I parked down there some too. And so, but it's not a bad walk, it's, you know, like I said, it cleared up a lot of space for us, and that was possible because of our swats, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Comment, I am glad to see that parking lot as well, and so that's pretty exciting, but hey, the distance helps us keep in shape, right?
It does, yeah, it does.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is the Denny County School System Pre-K Report Update, Dr. Hope.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. And letting you know that we are in what we call our pre-K lottery window. This week and next week, those families that have children who will be four years old, bisective of first of this year, and would like for them to be a part of our pre-K program for next year, have the opportunity to go online and put their students name into our drawing. Now, as most of you may know, we've had a pre-K classroom here in the district since 2016. We started with just one at that time. In 2019, that number grew to thirty, and still yet, we had folks that were on the waiting list. So with this year, we added that one more class to our, it's a total of four. There is one classroom at each odd elementary schools, and because of the demand, that fourth class was added at East fan. So our classrooms are running very full. We have great participation, and we hope that this year we'll have that same sort of participation. With, like I said, the sweet spot being that this year, we didn't really have a waiting list. If someone came in later in the year and wanted to enroll in the program, we had room in the classrooms there at East fan. So those classes have, you assume that they might have been distributed to Blue Ridge or West fan, but their parents took advantage of those openings everywhere at East fan and they're bringing their kids. So right now, when last I looked today so far, we have seventy-six children today in what is upcoming here. We're maintaining the four classrooms, and we hope that they will be full as we go forward.
Awesome. Great.
Next item on the agenda, Denny County School System Transportation Update, enter the director, Transportation, Mr. Jury. Tell us what's been happening, sir.
Boarders, Vice Superintendent, glad to be able to give an update on transportation. I got a brag as an ad in the first, so you see the aerial shot there. My daughter and son are part of Civil Air Control, and they get to do some flying. And she got to fly a few weeks ago, and she came up, she was, Daddy, Daddy, I think I took a picture of your bird. So the picture you can see is actually a lake of our facility in the mountains, so I have to give credit to immigrants for aerial shots. I want to start off by talking about our team members. With transportation, it's really two parts. You have our teams in the facility, and then we have our bus drivers. Our team is in the facilities, and before I tell you about them, they've been such a blessing to me. I came in and they welcomed me in and have, you know, tried to teach me as much as they can as quickly as possible, but they've been so gracious, and I'm so proud to have them as team members. But first, we'll recognize Denver Foster, to have on the bottom left. He's a administrator of shop management, and mostly I know Denver has a world's knowledge of transportation. And again, he's been so gracious and let me have some of that knowledge. We have Mr. Tommy Jordan on the top right. I'll talk about him a little bit more, we'll talk about our training events. Uh, I'll talk about him a little bit more when we talk about our training events. Uh, Mr. Jordan carries a, a lot of hats and, and does a lot for us there. Uh, we're just being a smaller system, of course, everybody has to, you know, wear many hats. Uh, we got Mrs. Denise Besser, administrative assistant, and she's kind of keeps all this house straight in the, in the facility area. And again, she does so much from payroll to scheduling trips, answering the phone, uh, she keeps us going. And then we have, uh, Tom Cook, master technician. We recognized him earlier. Uh, again, very knowledgeable, uh, can, can fix our new thing. So that's a huge blessing to have. And then we have Mr. Rodney Gensley. He's a bus inspector. And we're going to talk more about bus inspection later on into the presentation. And he also drives a full-time bus route. So he's, he's a man. He's a very hard worker. Um, start talking about our bus drivers now. These are our new, uh, bus drivers or at least new since the last update. Uh, again, very blessed to get these four individuals. They've been doing excellent job for us. We have Miss Angela Cracknell, Mr. Daniel Pecus. Uh, Mr. Pecus is also a full-time terror at, uh, Blue Ridge Elementary. And you'll, you know, to go through all our drivers, there are so many of them that either worked in cafeteria or parapluers or teachers that drive buses for us. So, uh, he knows that. We have Mr. Bob Mossom. And for any of the people who stay in the afternoon for the sign off, he's a dude. He, he brings so much joy. The sign off every day is, is something different and clever. And then we have, of course, last but we're able to bring back Miss Lisa Chilwell and, and she's been doing an excellent job for us as well. Next, we have our transportation leadership team. This is something that Mr. Gensley started, uh, before he left and we kept it because it's so important for us to keep the lines of communication open with our, uh, bus drivers. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. It's different being a bus driver because you're not in the building every day. So have that line of communication is that's so important. And we have Mr. Tim Masario, Mr. Ron McGillam, Mr. Dan Hyler, Mr. Greg O'Neil, Mr. Robyn Cersey. And then the next slide, guys, is I just wanted to have their names on, on the presentation. Because these people, our bus drivers, guys, they don't get a lot of recognition. You know, they're kind of behind the scenes a lot of times, but guys, these are wonderful people. And they truly are heroes because they are not doing it for recognition. They are not doing it to get rich. They do it because they love our, our students and they truly do. If you listen to our way in the afternoon or in the mornings, they actually make sure our students get where they need to get safe. And they'll go above and beyond, get Lisa's hush box, get Lisa's chrome book. They make sure those students get taken care of. And I just want to at least have names up there, guys, because these are great people. We appreciate our bus drivers. We try to do something at least once a month for our bus drivers. This is, uh, Valentine's Day. We did a breakfast for them. Uh, and you know the next slide, uh, here's some pictures from, uh, early in the year for Christmas. They used to give us some different events. And again, could not create at least some opportunities for them to come in and have that fellowship. Because it is different for them because we hear each other on the radio, but you really don't get to interact a lot with each other. You know, there, there may be a few that come out of shop here and there, a lot of work with other jobs. So when we create these opportunities for them to come in and have some fellowship with each other, some fun, it, it really helps, uh, build our, our team work. All right, now we'll get into our actual bus fleet. And you'll notice up there, two thousand twenty-five is our newest units. We just received four new buses about two weeks ago. Now, those buses were the ones y'all approved in June of two thousand twenty-two. We just got them. And we didn't get one of them. We got two more that were waiting on us on the center line. So, um, you know, I don't even want to say that word that happened a couple of years ago, but it still hasn't affected them.
Yes, it does.
Uh, so, and unfortunately, from what we hear, they're still pretty far out even if you order buses today. Uh, our oldest bus in two thousand six, those are some old international. We have a few of those left. We're hoping to phase those out as we bring these new buses in. Now, where it says we have fifty units in service, guys, that's not including the new buses. Uh, they're not in service yet. It'll be probably after, uh, spring break because we have to add, um, cameras, Wi-Fi. There's some safety features that we, we have to add. So it, it'll take a little while to get those accidentally serviced. Uh, we still have seven of the international buses. Uh, we have forty-three tons filled. That's currently what we buy and that's what we'll exclusively have hopefully here eventually. Uh, four, four units are air conditioned. Nineteen units have Wi-Fi. Uh, down with Mr. Matthews about to add some more Wi-Fi to some of our buses. So we'll have actually, uh, pretty much our whole route fleet with Wi-Fi with some of the subs. And we have two Wi-Fi activity buses. I put some pictures up here of the new bus, that bus left is one of our brand new buses. Uh, it was raining the day they came to Fashion Force. We brought it into the shop. And you can't really tell, but one of the things I want to show you, one of the new safety features on the new buses is they actually have backup cameras. So now on these new buses, you build a version like your car and you have an interactive view of what's behind you. And that is huge because if you've ever ridden a bus or driven a bus, you got your side mirrors, but you can't see anything directly behind you. So that is, that is huge. It's really neat in the, in the mirror, it just pops up that big screen there with the, with the, uh, with the backup camera. So we're really excited about having that safety feature.
Mr. Jury speaking of safety, you said that you had to add some items. Is that state required or is that a fan requirement?
No, that's a fan requirement. We, we do several things to our, our buses. One of the biggest things we do is we have what's called an extended stop horn, uh, which is, you know, especially on our busy roads, I guess that stop horn will be farther out. Uh, so it's a little bit more visible for the cars coming from behind. Uh, we also are adding the light of school bus signs to ours that you can really see at night in the fog. So, uh, we definitely, uh, add some things and we add things that's not even necessarily a safety feature, but make it more easily drivable by our, uh, bus drivers. So we definitely go above and beyond on our buses to make sure that they're, are safe for our students.
Thank you, sir.
All right, state inspections. Um, there's really two parts to state inspections. As I was going back through some of the old presentations, but we focus on the, the year, the once a year state inspection. But I want to actually talk about that and our monthly inspections. The state inspection is where the, the Department of Public Safety actually sends their inspectors in and they inspect our buses. And I want to rag on our guys, up here in the next slide. We had our fifty buses and we had no out of service violations. Out there, maybe counties or school districts in the state that probably did both that they had no buses without service. And that's a credit to Denver and Tom and, and Rodney and, and Tommy and Miss Neese and our bus drivers. Because it takes the whole team to make sure that, that happens. So that is, was a huge accomplishment. Here's more pictures of the state inspections and I just love the, one of the funnest things in everything is I love seeing those buses that live. It's just so cool to be true. But they had new facility guys that I lived to do the state inspection in two days. That would not have been possible without the lists in our new facilities. So that, that's, that is a huge blessing. Now, I want to.
Mr. Jury, given that they have been out of service until they're inspected.
They, if they find something that is wrong with the buses, they will take them out of service. You'll have to get it fixed and then when the state inspector can come back by your facility to, so you'll be adversity then coming back to the state of us. Uh, the monthly, uh, inspections, and I didn't realize this until I came into this role. We have to inspect all fifty buses every twenty days. So a lot of people talk, what's going on with transportation? Well, this guy doesn't have to inspect three or four buses a day to make sure we get all twenty buses inspected. And of course, it's all the other things that's happening with buses as, as things break. And we also have other vehicles in our fleet as well that have to be serviced and picked. So in, in order to get fifty buses inspected in, in twenty days, again, it takes a whole team. It takes, uh, Mr. Tommy, Miss Neese getting them scheduled, coordinating with the drivers to bring the buses in. And then with Rodney and Tom and Denver making sure they get inspected and fixed. So it, it really is a team effort and it's, it's, it's pretty amazing that they can rotate those few buses. And the reason why we did that is the state requires it for us to safety. You know, if we're doing inspections, we catch the things before they go over a problem. And so that is so important to make sure that our students are safe. And speaking of safety, back in the fall, which I was at Wesleyan, Ben and Ben, uh, we have our, uh, bus evacuation, uh, exercises of students, drivers, uh, and transportation gets together and all the, all the schools. Because that's where we transport buses. That's where all the students are on the buses or the most students. And you can see some pictures up there. You see Blue Ridge. I don't know how many saw the students. It was pretty foggy that one apparently. Also want to rag on our shop. We are only one, um, of four Georgia bus shops that are, um, ANC Blue Seal or X plus status. Uh, which means we have, uh, over seventy-five percent of our technicians that are master certified. So Mr. Tom and, and Mr. Denver are, and so that's, that's a huge, again, it's only four in the whole, whole state. Uh, and Denver, he actually is on the sixteen member Department of Education school bus, uh, specific committee. There's only five technical positions on that and he serves as one. So again, he has a world of odds when it comes to transportation. All right, uh, here comes the bus. Our principals, again, this is a, a huge win for us. Uh, because here comes the bus allows our parents and guardians to know exactly where the bus is. If they get that app and get it in, into their phone, then they can track that bus and know when that bus gets just a few minutes out, they know it's going to be at their stop. Uh, we have right now five hundred eighty-two families that are signed up. When I was going back and looking at the last couple of years presentations, I think just a couple of years ago, we'll have like a hundred. So we're up like five hundred eighty-two. This new, uh, coming school year, we're going to push this hard enough in the house. Because again, the more families we get signed up on this, uh, it, it's just great information for them to know that they're, where their students are and they're safe. All right, some data real quick. Uh, again, just giving you a little glimpse of what we do in the transportation department. Uh, we transport about a thousand students every day, okay? Little bit more than that. We got twenty-eight regular education routes, seven special each route and one, uh, alternative school route. Actually, I think we have a couple more special each route. We had to add a couple because I did the presentation. Um, all those routes, uh, buses are air conditioned. Now, that is just regular routes. Of course, that's all we do. We also, um, do, um, our trips, our field trips and all, and our, um, all school events and all those things to get added on top of that. So, uh, in our routes, we, we, uh, have about seven thousand two hundred twenty total miles. We average about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred miles a day. And then our additional trips, we average about seven per day. Some days a lot more than seven. Some, everyone's thought we'd be a little few less than that. But those, again, are on top of our regular routes. And we have done about eight, when I did this, we spent very hard time. So we've added quite a bit more of that. That was about eight hundred seventeen trips. And we've traveled about two hundred thirty thousand miles this year on our buses so far, or actually more than that now. All right, well, I told you about Mr. Jordan earlier, uh, it's our train division. Our train division is Tommy Jordan. But, uh, we're blessed to have him because he is a certified driver trainer, which allows him to do onsite training. So when we bring in someone who wants to learn how to drive a school bus, we can do the training, uh, pretty much on our site. With our new facility, we're blessed because we have an actual training pad to buses. And lots of school systems don't have that. They have to travel somewhere else to be able to have their, uh, their drivers trained. So that is huge for us. Uh, we got a couple of drivers trained right now. I'm one of them. I'm learning, uh, to get trained on the, uh, activity buses. Uh, and also Mr. Jordan, he helps with all, here comes the bus, with our, our developing our routes, getting those scheduled. He helps with training our administrators on how to do the video, uh, for our buses. So again, he, he does a lot of different jobs in our, in our facility. And one of the last things is the, the family community and road crew. When I took this job a couple of months ago, they said, man, you're going to be part of the road crew. And I went, oh, I'm going to close the road crew. And that, we had to be like the worst week of weather I think we had all year, like for our first two weeks. So the road crew, we should get up at three in the morning and, and go ride roads in the snow, ice, floods, wind. Uh, but it's a great, great thing, guys, because it gets one of those behind the scenes things that people don't really know about. But district level administrators, Ms. Diller, uh, Mr. Danner, Dr. Roof, Ms. Collins, Mr. Matthews, Mr. Foster, myself. We get up, we go start riding the roads and we try to hit as many roads as we can. Ms. Collins kind of stays back and we, we call in what we find in chief for next to the sheriff's department and the, and the county road department. And, you know, we try to make the most educated decision we can make about whether we want to open the school or delay it or, or do that. All right, guys, it's all about the students. You know, talk about, you know, our, our people and, and some of the numbers, but it all goes back to our students and keeping them safe. And that's why we do everything that we do at the transportation department. And if you know anybody who wants to be a bus driver, send them my way. We're always looking for bus drivers. So, uh, again, uh, if they, if you know somebody, make the address, please let them know. They go to website and file, we can call the bus, uh, transportation center and be glad to talk to them. And any questions?
Absolutely. If I had all my, I have to think I can talk about how I respect bus drivers.
Yes, sir.
They have responsibility, discipline, self-control, uh, have a daughter that sits fours. They take a bus to Dunnwoodie, Carthersville, evidently all over the world. A few kids have the privilege of running or playing golf. Our system is, that, that wouldn't have been heard about years ago, but it's, I think it's an awesome one for our kids.
Well, we do. We want to keep them safe and we want them to be able to experience everything they can experience in school, which means trying to get an opposition group of activities to play.
Bus drivers must be super humans.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is the Teacher of the Year twenty twenty-five. And Ms. Williams will explain what the state says to the students.
Good evening. How is everyone this evening? We've made it this far, right?
Yep.
What is time change?
Time's changing and I, I think we all feel it. I didn't think I wrote that I was wrong. So you would notice that on our agenda it says Teacher of the Year twenty twenty-five. And I'll tell you what, I came into this position and I met with Katie says, and one of the first things she said to me is, when you start Teacher of the Year, just know everyone looks at you and shakes their head like, what year are you talking about? So I know it's twenty twenty-four and we just selected the district's twenty twenty-five candidate. But they're really not called the twenty twenty-five Teacher of the Year. They're actually the twenty twenty-six Teacher of the Year. Because Teacher of the Year is a recognition in the state of Georgia. And so that could be the year that you are eligible to be the Teacher of the Year for the state of Georgia. So the way the state looks at that is that you have a whole year to represent your district and you fill out applications to then become eligible to be a representative for the state of Georgia the following year. So tonight, I'm going to tell you who was selected by their peers to be the Teachers of the Year for their schools. And then May the fourteenth coming right ahead, we will actually select our Teacher of the Year for next year for twenty twenty-five for our district, who's really the twenty twenty-six Teacher of the Year. Is it confusing enough?
Can you go right again? I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding.
At Blue Ridge Elementary, Caprice Ramsey was recognized by her peers and will represent them as their Teacher of the Year next year. At East Stand Elementary, Hayla Major was represented and chosen by her peers. At Westman Elementary, Kristy Broden was selected as Teacher of the Year. At Fannin Mill, Jill Abercrombie was selected. And at Fannin High, Ms. Kristy Rose was selected as the Teacher of the Year. So each of those five ladies will represent their school as Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty-five and complete paperwork if they choose to be the twenty twenty-six eligible candidate for the state of Georgia. And so the whole reason we had Teacher of the Year in fall and not Teacher of the Year in spring is that the state has realigned when they are going to honor teachers this year. Like, well, you know what? Doing this in the fall really isn't a great idea because teachers are already in the school year. They can even get to start the year representing their school. So it's a great step in the right direction. Our people will know at the beginning of the year they are the ambassador for their school. Any questions? All right. Oh, there's more singing on May the fourteenth.
Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is to approve Fannie County High School Old Greenhouse bid. Your name will present the information.
Ms. Collins, you have to log in here.
Okay.
Uh, more last month, the, uh, John Player, the Old Greenhouse as surplus. So we put that up to bid and I actually put it up to bid the next day that Pride House moved. And I actually put it up to bid the next day, that probably has more. And we had several calls about greenhouse. Trying to stall as much as I can, Ms. Collins.
Ms. Tipton may have to log in for me. Never mind, I'm in. I apologize.
Yeah.
No, you're fine. Ms. Collins, if that's the worst thing that happens tonight, and we are the unless, uh, year good. I'm not paying attention. Is that you who logged in?
Interact. Well, that's all, yeah. But issues with that is, is anything, if it was a bid, uh, we can get locked until the board meeting. Um, even though the, the board meeting is actually public, again, the, the information that's on there, again, is protected until it's approved.
And it's here.
That it? Mr. Davis?
Very good, guys. Okay, um, again, we, uh, we put that out on the website, uh, I had a couple meetings, actually, the Chamber meeting here was mentioned after the Chamber. I actually had a call from a gentleman who, who got the information of Chamber again. Uh, so saying all that, this hospital show, we only have one bid received, uh, for the greenhouse. Uh, and that's what was put out to bid, so one greenhouse, and then eighteen for the ten metal tables. So Ms. Ruth Bradley, a bid on those lots, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteens, uh, eighteen and nineteen. And, uh, for ten dollars each, and again, since that was the only bid, uh, we'll go back up to Ms. Collins. I request that, uh, that we reset those, um, for that, for those lots.
So Mr. Chair, what you're saying is this is what the board approved, put out for, in first outage, excuse me, surplus, the last month at the board meeting?
Correct.
Thank you. With that said, Mr. Chair, any recommendations to approve this presented?
So board, we have a recommendation to approve the greenhouse bid that is available to us today. And do I have a motion for that recommendation?
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, by a raised hand?
Mr. Chair, I'll stay.
And we have one extension. Four-four, one extension.
Thank you, sir. Next time on the agenda, since you are group item sixteen, is to approve incoming high school property as salvage, Mr. Leon Gannon?
Uh, board, there was no one bid on the, uh, the remaining items. Uh, I'm requesting that they be declared salvage. Uh, again, that is one, the old greenhouse at the high school, and those lots that were not bid upon, uh, the previous, uh, for agenda items. I think this is approved. Uh, beginning tomorrow, uh, we'll try and get somebody to deal on as quickly as possible, uh, because I know the, the high school, uh, is needing space, uh, probably for welding, for all mechanics, uh, the old greenhouse is a service purpose, and we gotta get it down there so, so we can move it.
And, um, Mr. Davis has moved all of the act activities that are part of greenhouse to the act facility of the big greenhouse as well, correct?
Ms. Diller, you just look half of my facilities, versionation, but yes, that is correct.
Thank you, sir. With that said, any recommendations to approve this presented?
So we have a recommendation to approve the Fannie County High School, uh, property, green, uh, old greenhouse as salvage. Do I have a motion?
You have that motion, sir.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, will you give the other half of your facilities up then, please, sir?
Uh, facilities, uh, finance department has up this afternoon, one thousand four hundred and thirty-two documented, completely worked on. So again, uh, again, shout out to the finance department. Uh, here's a couple of old pictures of the greenhouse, go ahead, Ms. Collins. Um, so again, this was after last month's meeting, uh, and then actually, this was nice with, uh, that is full operation greenhouse that is going on. Uh, Seth is already asking for a storage building behind the building. So we talked to, we've actually talked to the city department, Mr. Henson helped out tremendously, Dr. Ruth. Uh, Mr. Chastain's class is going to build this storage building. So, uh, so again, that, that's coming very quickly. Uh, the greenhouse, when it was approved, the GMP, the, the guarantee max price of a greenhouse was three hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars. The final invoice was three hundred, three hundred thou, three hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred dollars and thirty-six cents, which was actually a, a reduction of thirty-one thousand two hundred twelve dollars and sixty-four cents. There's always allowances in there, and those allowances were not used, so then we got printed back on that.
So we cut it down.
We definitely cut it down, right. Uh, this is, uh, Ms. Price up at the east, I showed you a couple finished part of that. And again, this was as it was rolling, this was, uh, two weeks ago. And then, uh, so again, I know the back was rolling, he asked if he, if he could present, I said, absolutely. And, uh, but again, it is, uh, we're gonna wrap this some steps up, so again, we see how it's largely about there. This is like the old bus garage, uh, the tanks that are underground, in-ground. Uh, instead of removing those, uh, we reached out to a company that actually we've worked with in the past. They've actually phoned both tanks, uh, which means when, uh, all the paperwork is completely done, they're phoned. We don't have to test them any longer, literally, they don't exist anymore. Uh, and again, since it is phoned, later years from now, I, I, when we meet, when those tanks are removed, they're phoned, that can be dug up and actually be moved, it's certainly concrete and everything. Again, this, we'll get the final paperwork from EBD, open within the next two weeks. Again, certain of those tanks are, are types of grounds out of our hair.
So it was an environmentally responsible decision, also maybe.
Absolutely.
That was a tremendous saving, was it not?
Very much so, very much so. Because we didn't phone it, we would have to test it every two years, and, uh, again, there's always could possibly some contamination, so again, this will be that something. Then the, uh, the last picture, uh, I've got to thank, uh, Ms. Bobby, I hope she's still here, and Lynn Harson, for the great apartment and paper two weeks ago, uh, which is after our board, local board training on February twenty-sixth. Uh, this is what has been actually, uh, the architect is actually finishing, uh, the finalized drawings that actually been constructed. I explained, uh, a lot of occasions, you know, what's taking so long, and, and truthfully, it, it urges me sometimes, because it does take a long time. But everything we've been presenting and, and everything has been just the paper drawings, but again, we can't give it to a contractor to go build. So that's what he is doing as we speak and talk to him this morning. Uh, so again, once those drawings are complete for all of that, then that will be sent to the CM, uh, that we approved a couple of years ago to build these facilities, and then we'll get started on it. In the meantime, the core drilling, uh, hopefully will be taking place within two weeks. The areas that, uh, that's going to be disturbed, again, especially the facilities are going to go, uh, the core drilling will be taking place to make sure we have suitable soil and, and that sort of thing. So things are moving, uh, uh, after talking to the architect this morning. Hopefully, he can get the drawings to the CM prior to our, um, our May board meeting. Uh, not that we can do a, a GMP or guarantee max price on that, but if he can get it to the, to the contractors prior to our May board meeting, that makes up the June board meeting, uh, we can have a guaranteed max price. Because the CM, that risk has to advertise it for twenty-eight days, just like we do, have to put out a care register sheet, so again, they have the bidding process, they have the calls. So, uh, I think it's moving forward. Uh, I don't want to wish the lot away, but I know we should be here very quickly.
This is the best example of hurry up and wait that I've ever been involved.
Hurry up and wait for two years, no. But we're, we're definitely out at the, uh, we're, we're getting, we're getting very close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is to approve this or financial report, Ms. Williams?
Good evening, that was the superintendent board. So we have our financial report for January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and we are at fifty-eight point thirty-three percent complete for this fiscal year, I mean, time keeps passing by. Uh, this is our general fund. And then we have our capital projects. So you can say about the cover, since the, compared to budget, and then we have our special revenues. And then the primary healthcare nutrition. And that is our financial reports for January thirty-first.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, any recommendations to approve this presented?
Board, we have a recommendation on the table, do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is the lawsuit page.
So our lawsuit paper received seven hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars in twenty-nine cents, uh, in January, for the month that was completed in January. Uh, that's one point two percent growth. We are still on track to complete and enact out this lawsuit in September twenty twenty-four, if projections continue as they have been in the past.
If you want to see a good coverage of that, the Chamber of Congress has some actual data on that. Get a copy of all of the lawsuits.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next time on the bid agenda, like Ms. Williams said, time is fine, is actually the FY twenty-five, or this will be a two-year, any kind of system budget timeline? She's going to review the timeline for setting next year's budget.
So what I want to do is, this is our generic budget calendar that we have each, each year. So again, March, we, you know, start reviewing everything, early March through May, we set our priorities and our goals, we look at staff, number of students we're projecting for next year, um, all of the different supplies, textbooks, and, and resources that we'll have, and then we continue to work on that. Uh, and then we have March through May, the board considers those, you know, the board approval intended budget, our tuck-in that budget, and then we, it's approved and adopted, and then for setting the year for the military. So then if we get the next document, we'll see a little bit more of the details. So this is our, for very fresh only, that is our projected timeline. So we're reviewing our budget timeline in April the twenty-fourth. I will then notice finish later, they will have our first public budget meeting on May the ninth at five p.m. And then we will have that meeting, then on May twenty-ninth, that we have said we'll advertise for our next meeting in June. And June thirteenth at five p.m. will be our second public budget meeting, and then swimming left to the budget. And if you would approve it to advertise at the newspaper, then we can have our next to continue from there. And so they will have our final, uh, anticipated approval of the budget of the, in the left side, the research.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is to approve the intergovernmental agreement for agreements and sign a real contract with A County Government, and as honorable, ladies and Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Jim. Please, we are here together to present to you the same applications that we have for summer service for our students through the Red Department. The first thing that I want to make sure everyone knows is that we will still have the Red Department already in June the third through July the nineteenth, and that will capture about two hundred of our students, which is an excellent funding press. To get a governmental agreement is the binding legal document between the county school system and Fannie County as a legal entity in South Georgia. And so that is the actual legal entity. However, we signed something that was almost exactly the same as a second document. And that is the agreement to punish shields between the nutrition department and recreation department. And because the nutrition department is not really a legal entity, nor is the actual Red Department, you would think, why do you have to enter into this? But it has to do with Rockford Store and Summer Food Service Program, this USC program. And that is something that they require to know that we are in agreement, that we are supporting one in that, or within our agencies. And so Mr. Jury has a very important role in this, because he has agreed, if you would like to tell them yourself to, for bests.
Yes, we have agreed to, uh, so a lot of the losses, and they actually take care of all the fuel, the bus drivers, we're just, you know, basically, we sit there, our, our buses are out.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
All right, Mr. Chair, any recommendations to approve this presented?
Board, we have a recommendation on the table, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you, sir, we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? Unanimous, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is executive session, and I would like to request an executive session for personnel and safety. And I would also like to, um, uh, Lindahl, the board attorney, Darren Deters, the operations officer, and Lieutenant, our account, the lead SRO to, um, join us.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Certainly.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Raised hand? It is unanimous. It is unanimous.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion pass. No action was taken while in executive session, but may I have a motion to approve the amendments from executive session on February eighth, twenty twenty-four?
You have that motion.
Thank you, sir. May I have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, by raised hand? It is unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you. This is Chair next time on the agenda is personnel. If you all will turn to your personnel sheet, please. I think Mr. Shaw, you guys everybody up and running. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to take the first step collectively. These are all resignations. A lot of them are due to retirements, like the last time. So we have a lot of people that are retiring. So a lot of our family members are very happy for them. So resignation taken collectively, Lydian Joseph Hayes, effective three-one, twenty-twenty-four, Kyra White, effective three-fifteen, twenty-twenty-four, Deborah Danny Clutch, effective five-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, Orissa Diane White, effective five-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, Travis Daverson, effective five-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-four, Millicent Millie Rice, effective five-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, Edith Lorain Rice, effective five-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, Sandra Sandy Graham, effective five-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Make a recommendation, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the next one and more are all completed in paperwork, background check, and training requirements, and I'd like to take those collectively if they're not an objection. These are all classified, all effective date three-eighteen, twenty-twenty-four, and that's Lee Olson, Charles Post, and Kobe Watkins. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation.
Do I have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
I don't know.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next recommendation, sort of sets to employees, all finished, completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. I'll take the first one by itself, and the other ones I'll take collectively unless there's an objection. First one is didn't pay, first set to the study, effective three-eighteen, twenty-twenty-four. I made that recommendation.
Recommendation, do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
The next ones are all for set to teacher, all effective eight-two, twenty-twenty-four, so next school year. And this part doesn't all hurt good. They may have retired a few minutes ago or want to retire, but now they're going to come back and help us out by seven. So that would be Sandra Sandy Graham, Debbie Fletch, Millicent Millie Rice, Edith Lorain Rice. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation.
There's a recommendation, do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. That concludes personnel sheet. Now we're on to your ten comments. Well, it's worth appreciation, wait, and I thank you all for your service, your duty service, your kind of time and labor service, and I appreciate it, you always being there for the children and the community. I'd like to do a big shout-out to Sheriff Kirby and all of our SROs. We appreciate your support and dedication to our schools and our community. They are part of the family. We were very fortunate tonight to have Officer Thomas Kay with us, who was here before me, and then lived in the dorm, the couch was in just a few minutes ago, so thank you all for all that you do. Matt Price, thank you for your presentation. I love your school, I love your kiddos. Everybody that did the presentation, I appreciate you. For sure, this was your first presentation, and I'd like to also make the announcement and congratulate you tonight, because tomorrow you will no longer be a tenor, director of presentation, but ready to be director of presentation. Congratulations, sir, and everyone. We are big, and we are blessed. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Chad? I'd like to start with you, if you don't mind me calling you Chad. All right.
Thank you, everybody, and show that you're listening. It is an honor to be here. I had a privilege, I'm gonna call it a privilege, but it was true to hear, to go to a winter concert from a band here some weeks ago, and Dr. Hodges was really a mess, sir, your band director, and I can assure you, what an amazing performance it was to see, and how much she brought, the job she's doing is amazing. Then we watched that high school, and it's always a pleasure to watch that high school. I ran down, and he wanted a high school. I said, "This is all the songs those kids learn," so I want to definitely shout out to the band. A lot of times we don't do that, we do sports and everything else, but I do, the band, and that really, really, really did, and I appreciate it, and the bunch of songs that I hold dear. I want to shout out to our SROs and our chair, for what an amazing job they did, and how well they worked with us, who could not operate and be as safe as what we are without them. They are incredible, I said, and also incredible to us, and from the bottom of my heart, I do appreciate they are, and congratulations, for sure. With that, so lucky, congratulations, and I'm done.
Mr. DeWes?
Anytime you feel a room like this with all the kids and all the room, thank you. You got assistance, it's pretty huge church, I'm very proud. That's it?
Mr. Brown?
Thanks, sir. It's an honor to be here, it's an honor to serve. I'd rather you folks, I'm sure you're part of time here, you're our family, we're our education family, and that's the ethic I understand, and I appreciate you each and every one of them. Tonight, I'd like to just talk about Superintendent Miller, Mr. Van, Dr. Hodges, Sergeant Galt, SRO Kay, and all of the people that dealt with the threat which may have passed through the justice system, it was handled efficiently and effectively, and I'm so proud of each and every one of you that are all that have dealt with the situation appropriately, we don't deface anything seriously, and, again, my hands are all on, I watched the phone, and we should have handled it better, so, and I have a bad call to security, to save our kids, always need our constitution, with extensions on our buses, although there's the intense level of security that we put in, which is amazing, all of you, that's...
You can give a second on that, Chair.
Yeah.
I don't know where this is, but I'm just sorry. I appreciate everybody getting here. You know, as a, I rapidly came up front with my mic on, my mic on, I was down my head.
Okay, you're in that, y'all, heads on down. Hey, boy! Anyhow, I appreciate everybody getting here. The first thing I got rolled down is our new facility that's going on with a new property. I am ecstatic that it's gonna happen for our children. We talked about tonight about offering our children anything that they want to do to promote them in becoming productive citizens. I'm a hundred and fifty percent for that. Going to our board internal review, they've had that on one before, but I did, I loved it. We talked about the things that this system needs, and I don't know, me and Mike was in there, and the other people's in there, but one thing that was said, the whole meeting, Morgan Arp, who was superintendent way back there, he looked at me and said, "Boy, it's a lot different it was when I was superintendent." Yeah, it's a lot different, anyhow. Mr. Price, enjoyed your presentation? One thing I enjoyed about your presentation is those people who take their time, come out and help those children with their demo, I can't say enough, I can't say enough. Thank them from the bottom of my heart. Transportation? I like the rearview camera. I like it. And I'm sorry, I haven't been around you enough to get your name here, but congratulations on becoming our director of transportation. I know that you did a good job. You've done a good job in our system for whatever you've done since you've been here. And I can't say enough about the sheriff's department, the SROs, and Ms. Dillard, and Mr. Tanner, and those who worked in the system, and our principal with the amendments too. You know, when it comes to our children, and you see these people work all night long, you know they're dedicated, and we got people in our school system who are dedicated, and you can't say enough thanks for that. I'm gonna close with this. Hallelujahs, God bless you, we are family. Thank you.
You're, oh, you need to have your mic, babe.
Thank you, Bobby. And, you know, Martha, thank you for totally confusing us on the teacher of the year, but I do love this time, and I wish it would stay this way, so that's my vote. And I'm a worker, and I need daylight, I need to, I need to work, and with saying that, I was in a meeting this week, and it really just stuck out to me the role of this, this board. And some of you look at us five, but Ms. Dillard is a part of this board. She's a board member just like we're a board member, and so I'm saying that to say this, I won't, as a veteran, I, I don't even know how to take it sometimes when people say thank you for your service, 'cause it was the best part of my life, you know? That was a time that me and my bride were just young, and, and a great job, I loved it. But I want to tell you, gentlemen and Ms. Dillard, that I thank you for your service. That's something that stuck out to me this week, and I want to, I want to thank you for the service that you give, because a lot of people don't know what you do, when you do it, most of them are asleep. So I'm saying thank you for that, and Mr. Drew, thank you, and thank you for stepping up and taking charge, and I'm excited for what you're gonna do. I would like to say that those school bus drivers, what they do to keep those, those in-service buses in service. As a Marine, I was in charge of twelve thirty-two million dollar airplanes forty years ago, and the fact is, we did daily turns to check that airplane out so it could fly again, and it was that daily maintenance of looking over it, and that's what your bus drivers are doing every single day. They're checking slack adjusters, they're looking at that bus, and they're making it aware so they can keep that thing rolling, so I'm thankful for them. SROs, again, you can't get enough praise this week for the job that you're doing, thank you for the technology that you know and the speed at which you do that. It has not gone unnoticed. And, and this to everybody that's here and those that are listening. While, while I was in that meeting this week, and we were talking about service, I laid me this statement that just shook me a little bit, because she said, "If we could ever keep it in mind that the kids are watching." Think about that a minute. Your attitude and how you deal with things, how you handle things, because they are constantly watching us. And so I'd like to leave you with that, so you can meditate on that, but a great, great board meeting tonight, and I want to thank you all for coming and doing a part, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Derek Quinn, and Mr. Derry, that hosted and promoted for us tonight, I appreciate you.
Yes.
And now I'll off that motion to adjourn.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous, we are adjourned.